Lord, and thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. Thank you for the sunshine and the warm weather, God. And, Lord, I just ask you to be with this council as they conduct the business of the city, Lord, just to be with them, God, as they make decisions to better their city, Lord. And we do thank you so much for all you do for us and for all your wonderful blessings, God. Just go with us and we'll leave this place, God, and just help us to just to share your word as we're out among the other people, Lord. We love you so much and we thank you so much. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone out this afternoon. We'll get started right into this and we'll, I'll just start off with the things that I have. The first thing that I've got to bring up to let the council make a motion to let me sign this is the lease agreement with Conerstone. They're wanting to lease Bethune Park, and so that'll be for something to bring up when we get into council meeting. So, Bethune Park, the lease on it. The next thing is, is we tinted the front half of the city hall, the windows in the front half, and everybody seems to like that, and it's a lot cleaner than having blinds, and it looks real good. So, for, I think it's eleven hundred dollars, we can do the back half of the building and the end doors. So, I'll be bringing that up if somebody wants to make that motion to tint the back half and the end doors. The next thing I have is, we've been talking about this for a long time, and we've never really got it off the ground, but we've been talking to Tarkog for years about updating our zoning ordinances, and it's getting around to the time that we're gonna have to get this done. These zoning ordinances is real important. They were done in, most of them was done in like eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three. So, there's been a lot of changes made, you know, around here. So, it's time for us to upgrade these ordinances to kind of fit the times. We'll use a lot of ordinances from towns that's our size throughout the state, and Tarkog, Lucas Blankenship is gonna be the one that kind of heads that up for us. There'll be a committee that will work with him from the community, and so I'm gonna be asking the council to do this. This is something that costs somewhere around twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand. This will be probably spread out over the rest of this term, paid in small increments and in maybe the first few months of the next term. He said it would probably take six months to even maybe a year to do this. It's such a big project. So, I'll be asking them if they want to do that, then we'll do it. So, alright, the next thing I have is, we went through, last Monday night, we went through, it was a work session, it was on LED lighting, and the company that done the audit came back with some really good figures on the lighting, and so we're ready to put this out for bid. Now, I've got a list of the lights, and this one here's got a Model T-seven Harmonic Current Reduction Module on it, and each one of these locations will have one of those put in every panel, which lowers your power bill, you know, even below the LED lighting, this current reduction module will lower it five to ten percent more. So, this is something we're gonna put out to bid, and I will be asking them to put out a bid for the products and the labor. If somebody wants to bid product and labor together, that's fine, but it will be, you know, the products and the labor will be involved in this. And it's, we're changing out the lights and upgrading them to LED. This will be over nine out of ten of our buildings. The only one we're not upgrading is the sports complex. The reason we're not doing the sports complex, you'd think that those big lights up there would be something you'd want to upgrade, but Sammy sat in on some of the meetings with us. Those just run for a short period of time at night, it does not factor in good enough savings to make it worthwhile to change them. Now, if he was building a new ball field, then it would be worth it, but just to do this right here, it's not. So, anyway, that's the other thing that I have. Okay? We'll start off with, Marshall, you got a phone?
No.
Please, John.
Yes. I'm gonna start off with the pony of the board that we missed, some overlooked, some on last council meeting we had. First of all, I'm gonna bring out, to put Pete Long on the Board of Adjustment, and his term be out October seventeenth. And also bring out Ron Ward, W A R D, to the Planning Commission Board, and his term be out October two thousand eighteen. And also, I'm gonna revise the Labor Board appointments. Some of them's gonna become out seventeen, some gonna become eighteen. When we go to the regular council meeting, I'll call the names, and we have to do each individual, so I bring that up. The city hall has got all those lights around it, and it's very pretty at night, but Police Department don't have any lights to shine on the building and make it look good. So, I had the chief to give me an estimate from Laney Electric, and he gave me an estimate today for thousand and nineteen dollars, or thousand ninety-one dollars. So, what he's gonna do, he's gonna put about two, three spotlights. We already have a lot coming out for the light pole, so he's gonna come to it from there and put some spotlights on the building and make it look good at night.
Can I ask a question, Mr. O'Malley?
Sure.
Can we try to add this into this LED lighting?
I think he's got it as LED lighting.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Well, just, you know, like in the whole contract at one time.
Sure, yeah.
But we'll look at that. We'll look at doing that.
But I'm gonna bring it up to pass it tonight where he can go in and do it while he's here doing it, be cheaper on us. I've been saying this for past two, three meetings, that we showed on the police officers, our main police officer that been here with the service for fifteen, sixteen years, everybody knows him, Tim Devon, he had surgery, and his doctor told him he's gonna be out at least six months. So, we don't know really, it's gonna be six months or longer than that. So, we're gonna be short, and we gonna hire another one tonight. His name is Steven Malone. Steven, if you wanna stand up, and I'll introduce you. Steven is a resident of Ransville. He has been a certified police officer for three years. Steven is a longtime resident of Ransville. He has a career at the Geraldine Police Department, and then he went to Northeast Alabama Law Enforcement Academy, where he classed Secretary of the Treasure. And he was the second in his firearm ability, and he graduated in the top-ten academy in his class. He has since worked in with the Fort Wayne Police Department, which would not recruit him, he recruit us. So, I want to keep that on the record, that without pulling officers from other towns. Anyway, his level is senior patrolman of the Natchez, and where he also assisted with FTO training program. What is FTO?
Field Training Officer, sir.
Okay. He has received extensive training in multiple areas of the law enforcement, and he wants to serve our city and the way he grew up, and he is calling it home. If you want to say anything, Steven.
Yes, sir. Just, we really appreciate the opportunity to work here. I grew up here, I've always loved it, always wanted to be a police there. I've worked with Chief Smith before at Fort Wayne, and we work together good, and we kind of have the same mentality on work ethic and everything. I feel like I can do good for the community, and kind of get more into community policing and not just, you know, profit figures, but everybody to do, that's kind of not really my thing anymore, just more be involved with the community and be a real police officer, and, you know, just do as good as I can and hopefully keep moving forward. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to work here.
And I feel like with Steven coming on the board, we're gonna have very, very strong police department.
Yes, sir.
The way we're looking at it. And if things goes well, and we're still gonna do our program like we talked about on the senior citizens, or seniors, really, not citizen.
So, we're gonna be at four staff?
We're gonna be, well, with Steven, that gives us eleven officers. Four staff really is twelve, based on our number of people that live in town. But, I think we can get by with eleven to ten gets by. But I know without ten, really, it's ten. So, we're trying to get by with ten. Y'all got any question?
Thank you.
I believe that's all I got tonight.
Mr. Bob.
First thing I wanna talk a little bit about is that our streets up and down our four lanes are bad, getting littered. And I've been talking with Bijon about maybe getting the state to get us four signs coming in on our main highways. And talking with the chief, I'd like for us to start exercising that five-hundred-dollar fine for people littering on our four lanes, because when we start to mow, it's gonna really be a lot worse. So, I'd like to work on that with you. We've already, Bijon's got us some signs coming.
I talked to the guy who's in charge of this today, and he says he's got to order those signs, and normally these signs is built in Montgomery by person, so it's gonna take about six to eight weeks to get them. And once we get them, we'll put them in.
And we'll be on all of our four lanes, chief, on our city limits, and I would, lack of the officers, just start watching. You know, I mean, all you gotta do is go out here and go back towards Cottrell Moore Garden, this is beautiful.
It is, I agree.
You know, it's the five-hundred-dollar fine, but on top of that, you're looking at court cost. So, it's gonna be about six hundred, seven, about seven hundred and eighty dollars. So, but, on the other hand, when we go through mow, it's gonna be, look like a confetti up down to the mow, and so we gotta start controlling our littering better.
The tricep tears up the mower too, also, because you don't know really what you run into when you mow.
I'd like if you get to Mr. Harry and inform your officers to be watching for that.
I'll do it first thing I want to do.
And the next thing I have is, we're...
But we can write any ticket to, we put the sign up, so...
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Next thing I have, we're gonna purchase a transit to where we can shoot levels in ditches, install in our tiles and everything, that's nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I'll be bringing that to you. Also, I have sound here tonight, somewhere. There he is.
No, I lost that one slightly.
We're gonna redo it. Simon, why don't you come up and talk about this ordinance a little bit real quick, what we're changing it to and what we're gonna make during the future.
We're looking at ordinance on streets as far as subdivision's requirements for right-of-way width, pavement width, the drainage pipe in the, under the road, and also under the driveway. Looking at, maybe putting this little pipe head well on to help with safety and to keep the field material up there. And the right-of-way is changing from, or proposed to change, obviously proposed, from fifty feet to sixty feet, which gives us a little more room for utilities and all of that.
You don't take fifty feet as an outside?
No.
And this fifty feet is what the city's been for a long time, but if we go to sixty feet, then we match up with a county, and you don't have fifty feet in the city and sixty in the county, and it's just back and forth.
I didn't know county and county sixty.
County sixty.
Yes.
What's the state?
State it depends, hundreds.
Power.
Yeah, hours, hundreds.
Go ahead, Sam.
So, the pipe, we recommend you use concrete pipe, but you can use the high-density polyethylene pipe. It's called HDP. It's the double-wall pipe, has the smoothness on the inside, it's corrugated and all of that. You can use that also under the road, because the county, that's permissible in county. So, I've looked at their regulations and gone off of that. As far as the driveway, you know, this comes into play over a period of time. After ten or twenty years, after you resurface the road and the driveway's right up at the road, and you put a couple inches asphalt on it, then it bumps off down to the driveway. Now, DOT sets up where they saw off a couple feet of that, then you can tie your pavement in. So, we're proposing to you to stop your concrete driveway, say two feet from the edge of the pavement, and that way you can transition from the edge of the pavement to the drive. Now, the drive needs to be practically the level, you know, where it's coming up there. But as the road is built up, we can taper off down to it, and that, you know, when you put asphalt on concrete, it lasts for a little while, but eventually, you know, break up and you gotta, you'll have a bad bump there. So, that proposal's in there. That's different from what we previously had. And the utilities, as far as water lines and all of that, we've got specs in there for that. We are requiring you to step out under the street and not cut the street, you know, after it's paved and everything. You pretty much know where your water meter's gonna be, you know, for your lots and all that, so put a conduit on there. I think the water company, they can jack under the road, but we recommend for you to put a conduit in there so that, and have it noted on the map, so we can know where it's located, and what utility company can do that. And we'll be requiring the property owner to pay for preparing the bid and also recording the map that's given to the city, furnished the city, got the bid and map at no cost to the city. Stealing that to the city. It's, city's not in a road-building business, we're in a maintenance business, and we just think it's important that when we inherit a road, that we inherit a good road. We don't need to inherit a road that we're gonna have to come back and spend, you know, taxpayers' money on in a few years. And everybody wants a good road. It really helps your neighborhood and increases the value of your city. And we think these are reasonable, we don't think there's anything in there that's out in left field. So, anybody have any questions about it?
Also, we've added in that where we'll be, all of our driveway tiles will be on forty-five. That's part of the regulation. But if you're going up and down the main roads and stuff, and the state highways, you'll see a lot of those now, it's forty-five instead of just drop-off, and there's several different reasons. It keeps the tile from stopping up, but I think one of the biggest factors is if somebody was to run off of it, they can correct it back up on the road with forty-five. They can't do that with a drop-off tile. So, that'll help us on our drainage, because we have tiles stopped up when it comes to big rains, so that'll help us on them with them cement barriers as well.
And there's some standard drawings that DOT has, that's, we reference those in there as to how you build those. Then we have a typical section about the right-of-way and width of the road bed, which three feet on each side, twenty-foot pave, which that has a sound. The middle part of the base is all the across that twenty-six feet.
I guess I have a question, maybe not directly to sound, just to the other councils, do y'all think this might discourage future home builders, the people that's gonna build houses or open by property and subdivision, et cetera? If we increase...
Well, if you're in the building, and if you're in construction, it's pretty simple, you're the developer.
Right.
If you're developing them, then you're gonna, it's your responsibility, like Sam said, it's our responsibility in the main town. It's theirs to get them to up the codes to where we don't have to go back and fix them all the time.
Oh, I understand. I was just asking, you know. I was knowing this, you know.
I think it's just another great starting point to make our town look a little bit better and up to speed, in my opinion. You spend just a little bit extra, so...
I'm, you spend just a little bit extra, but make it look better, so...
Yeah, I got a contact in case, looking at the subdivision, I said, you know, be aware, you know, we're looking at changing whatever the city decides, so...
What else do you have, Sam?
You asked me to look at the intersection of, I call it Church Avenue, some folks call it Church Street, but I think it's Church Avenue, up at the intersection of Carlisle Road where it's a nightmare merge from Carlisle Road out in Highway seventy-five. And I have reached one of those birthdays, it's got the big number up front and a little zero out at the end, and I don't have any reflections, as I used to have forty years ago, but, you know, roads are not only designed for senior citizens, but they're also designed for teenagers. And you gotta have visibility if you're gonna see approaching traffic. And we have a situation there, you know, there's a house real close to the pavement. I talked to that gentleman when we were paving Carlisle Road, and he says, well, that keep me awake at night. And I said, yeah, you're sleeping out in the road. And I said, they're gonna keep you awake at night. Anyway, and I talked to some other folks that travel that road and try to get out in the morning at, say, seven o'clock when you're trying to get to work, and, you know, it's called that rush hour. And if I'm coming down Carlisle Road, and I've got Church Avenue coming from my right, and they have the right-of-way, and for the people that live on Church Avenue, they get, they get, keep crossing thirty-five or turning or whatever, and if I'm sitting on Carlisle, I'm sitting there waiting till all the traffic is cleared on Church Avenue, so I can pull out in Church Avenue and approach Highway thirty, thirty-five, seventy-five, so that I can cross the road or access the highway or what. And it seems to me, just from looking at it and thinking about it, we could put up a stop sign up there, and I've looked at the location, and I'll get with Mr. Dobbins on that. It's about even with the end of that house there, so that you can, you can see the people on Carlisle and all of that. And if we put up a stop sign there, and we'll have to sign it good and get it on the news and let people know, because there're gonna be a few people that, out of habit, they're not gonna stop. They've been coming through there for fifty years and never stopped, they're not gonna stop this time.
Still have that to shame these, right?
Yep. So, anyway, but I would recommend that we put up a stop sign there. And I'll get with Mr. Dobbins to make sure we get the right size. I think it'd be about twenty-four when it's being done.
Yeah.
Something like that. And we need to also...
Both of them need to be patrolling and full of them.
Yeah. And we need to put on, put up below the stop sign, two-way stop, let them people know that there's two people stopping. And we don't have that where Church and VFW Road merge out there, it's just two stop signs, but I think we need to put two-way stop on that too, you know, you got basic signs.
You forgot about waiting and sitting there.
You guys have that on?
Oh, yes, sir.
I thought, oh, it's the least, if I talked to him, when we were paving that road, he came out there and he said, I had to stick there a lot. And I said, well, Keith, you just need to go up to Pail Street and access seventy-five. Anyway.
I think the people will be happy if we put that up, especially on Carlisle Road.
Well, you know, there's a mirror there, but I don't really trust that mirror, because I'm not sure how far up the road it's looking and all that. And just for your information, we finally got Carlisle Road finished, got the hickory white hickory on the sides week before last, and so we came in under budget, so...
Why we like it.
Sir?
So, that's the way we like it.
Yeah, as always, good news, sir. And Mr. Luther, the county engineer, he's sending you a final balance on it in a short period of time. I talked with him today about that.
Yeah, he mentioned it to me the other day, that he was getting closer.
Yeah, I told you about what county he's leaving, he'll be about the same amount. Do I got any question?
Thank you.
No, sir, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing I have, Mayor has overlooked adding Jamie Jones to the initial terms of the night, be adding, bringing him up, putting him on the two-seventeen on the Agger Center. And that's all I have.
This is, I think, we're gonna have to make a decision on something here, where we've been in touch with AMIC, and our last administration, when they built the bicycle trail and stuff around through the Agger Center and Field of Dreams and through the woods and everything, it was time that we're gonna have to be responsible for it, if it's gonna be on our property. So, we contacted AMIC and had them to come. Actually, they did a walk-through, a ride-through on the whole trail, and I have a letter, basically from them, and I'd be glad to read it if you want me to. It's basically stated, it says, "I'm writing to you today as an AMIC loss control representative of a recent loss control visit was made to the city of Ransville March the ninth, for the purpose of reviewing the existing bicycle trail located in property of Northeast Agger Business Center. Says my goal is to assist you in any way I can with safety and liability issues to the city of Ransville Main County." And he wrote back and said, "Based upon observations made during my visit, my recommendation is as follows. I recommend that any special recreation area, such as bike trails, skateboard parks, climbing walls, ETC, be reviewed and designed and installed by a professional that are educated in the subject. Improperly designed tracks can result in dangerous situations for users of the track and subject to the municipality to additional liability issues. Says for example, improperly designed tracks can result in erosion in places like turns that create unsafe scenarios for users of the trail. Another concern is the inflammation of obstacles within the trail. If these obstacles are not engineered to specs for their specifically intended use, these obstacles may not be able to structurally withstand repeated use, rendering them dangerous for users. Says having a professional who is familiar with the intended purpose designed the trail can help in limited liability issues that can arise from a poorly implemented course." And he left his number for us to call if we had any questions. So, we're gonna make a decision if that's gonna stay. If it is, we're gonna have to have somebody look at it and make sure it's safe enough for that, or do I have it?
How much it gonna cost us?
That's a good question, I don't know yet.
Didn't he have, didn't he explain something else about it, about something about the two trees there in between the trail and... there and in between the trail and how it, you know, if we done something, had to cut down a bunch of stuff and, or am I just?
Yeah, there was, there was some tree problems.
I know that was a conversation somewhere.
Uh, there was, there was multiple tree problems in it, too close when you're making turns, there's the trees in the way. And, and, you know, it, I guess it's more like a, um, like a motocross type, except for bikes where they're riding real fast and a lot of turns and jumps and stuff. And so he was looking at it from the standpoint that this was, uh, pretty dangerous. Uh, you know, it could be, somebody could get hurt real bad on it, especially with all the trees around it. And, uh, his, his thoughts was that it needs to be re-engineered, uh, somebody's gotta take care of it every day. If a limb falls in it or hangs down and somebody runs into it and they don't have safety glasses on or whatever and it punches an aisle, then it's a, it's gonna be a problem for us. And so that's the reason he, he recommended that we probably do away with it, uh, unless we wanna put a lot more money into it. So.
When you say do away with it, you talking about just block it off, not, not be responsible anymore, or what?
Yes, just do away with the, I mean, like, and, and, and here's, for instance, um, they ride and they go across the roads.
Right.
You know, he says that is totally, uh, you know, really, really dangerous. Because if somebody's not noticing, somebody comes across the road on a bicycle real fast, then they can get run over, you know? And even though there's bike signs there, that don't mean that somebody's gonna stop for a bike that they don't even see coming that just shoots out the road that running real fast.
But my concern is to not spend any more money than what you already have. Just block it off, put a sign up says, "This is not city's responsibility," or whatever, if you get hurt. And leave it like that.
Well, if you just do that, put a sign that says not the city's responsibility if somebody gets hurt.
You gotta go in there and take all the signs down and knock down all the jumps and take all the, you gotta, you just gotta.
It's all in, it's a.
I never been there, so.
Well, that's what you'd have to do to do away with it.
I still wanna spend any more money than we have to.
Okay. All right. We'll discuss that, Phil.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Ross?
Uh, Mayor, what I'm gonna bring up tonight is the updated pay scale. And, uh, basically what that is, is all the department heads, um, based, are put on salary. You made a committee, so I blew this, myself and Councilman Byram and, uh, Councilman Freeman. So we looked over the pay scale and, and we're gonna go ahead and bring that up in a motion. I'll go ahead and pass that.
Also. I got, hold on. I got a comment on that. Me and Chief talked about this, pay scale and stuff. And we was deciding not gonna have a, a captain anymore position. What do y'all think about that?
Well.
This don't have anything to do with position. This is about the department heads. It don't have anything to do with the position.
Right. But on the older scale and the newer scale position, we still have showing captain position. And we don't want captain anymore.
We'll just take it up. We'll track it down.
I just want investigators, patrolmen, sergeant, assistant chief, and the chief.
Well, then you need to bring out that within the department.
Not, or what, whatever. If you wanna do away with it, I ain't got nothing to do with
the pay scale. This is all about the department heads. You ain't talking about the department heads.
We can, we can remove that, but.
Hey, we can review that anyhow.
Yeah, we can remove that out of there if you don't believe.
Any more questions on that? Okay. Next thing I have, Mayor, is, uh, we need two desktop computers at the fire department. Uh, we have one right now and it's our training computer, uh, for Chief Wright. Uh, he's our new safety coordinator, so he needs that computer. And we need the two computers, uh, for Jason, the recruiting retention coordinator, because he is doing outstanding job on that. He's, he's saving us money. And also, um, for the captain's office, so that way we'll be squared away on that. The cost on that's like six sixty-seven. So, need you for, for, for both of them. Hope. And if you don't elaborate on any of that, Chief, you're more than welcome to.
Well, the computer for replacing's just been up and long for several years now. We've been working on it, done it multiple times. And last time Robin came out, she said it'd be better off just to replace the computer. It's just, it's just old and outdated. It's always trouble.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Kevin, do you guys find?
Uh, Mitch Terry took care of all the things. Let's just hire Mr. Malone here.
All right, appreciate it. Will?
Councilman Ralston took care of it.
No. What about Sammy? Sammy?
I have no business. We're doing wide open at Field of Dreams. Having a great time.
Awesome.
All right.
Going on as we speak.
Going on as we speak.
Yep, about that. Okay, we'll take, uh, about ten minutes. Uh, first thing, Carlisle Marshall?
Here.
Bijon?
Yeah.
Byron?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Ross?
Present.
Okay. All right. Next thing on the, the list is, uh, approving the minutes. Everybody read the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve minutes, Mayor.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. It's presented by the clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, I'll just go down the list so I don't forget anything. But first, before I do, I, I looked for Tim while y'all, I thought he was here. And he was hid behind, I thought, he must've been hid behind Sammy or whatever or something. I don't know what, but, but, uh, I will call him, Tim, uh, for just a second.
Yeah, I wanted to invite everybody out to the Bevel Center Thursday night, six o'clock, um, having a reception in honor of, uh, State Majority House Leader Nathaniel Ledbetter, recently appointed to that position. We'll have a reception. We'll have some state officials there. Um, starts at six o'clock. We'll have some refreshments. Um, wanted to ask some questions too, if anybody knew any more details than that. Um, I don't know for sure which state officials. I think Matt McCutcheon is one of them. Uh.
Steve Lewenstein.
Yeah, Senator Lewenstein will be there. So everybody come out to that. Um, down here at Bevel Center. You think anything else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, excuse me for the first time.
It's okay.
Okay, the first thing on my, on my list is the, uh, to empower me to sign the lease agreement with, uh, Conrastone for Bethune Park.
I make a motion and we empower the mayor to sign the lease with, uh, Conrastone to play at Bethune Park.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, empower me to sign the lease agreement with Conrastone for Bethune Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it. Uh, the next thing I have, uh, somebody have to make a motion on this. Uh, well, I was getting there. Uh, the next thing I have is the, uh, redoing the zoning ordinances and letting TARCAG come in and help us with that. Uh, I've got a committee for that, but I may, we may change some names around. But right now, I just need, uh, the okay to sign the contract with TARCAG to start the process of upgrading our zoning ordinances that's, uh, quite a few years old, so.
Mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Will that be on this? Will that be on new books and stuff that where they can actually do what sections want?
It'll be, it'll be on the books and, um, and then all those ordinances, um, and Tim can correct me on this, but I think all of our ordinances is on the internet, not, you know, where we, isn't that right, Tim? Where anybody can go on and look at them. So after we get them upgraded, then they'll all be, as we upgrade them along, they'll be actually put out there, you know, for people, so.
It's gonna be up in everybody.
Yeah.
Especially the motion, Bevel Board.
I make a motion if we get authorized, the mayor, to go ahead and do that.
All right. We have Marshall. Marshall made a motion. All right, who's gonna second it?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, um, uh, for the ordinances. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, the next thing I have is, uh, is the window tanning, uh, to go ahead and do the rest of the city hall in the window tanning.
Does anybody make a motion on that? I make a motion to heading the window in the back of city hall.
Okay.
Second his motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Got one note. Okay. Uh, the next thing I have, and somebody have to make a motion on this, is, uh, we, we wanna put out, uh, for bid for, uh, doing some LED lighting. And here's the specifications I wanna go by. And so, uh, these specifications can be picked up at city hall, uh, or we can fax them to them. So there'll be, uh, the, the specifications for the lights and then the installation. So it'll be two different, needs to be two different motions.
How long you advertise them?
This'll be, uh, let me get a date.
I think you have to give it at least fourteen days.
Yeah, I was going to do a little bit more than that.
Twenty-one days.
I was gonna do to Wednesday, um, April the fifth at, say, twelve o'clock.
Is this for the equipment or the?
Both, both of them.
So it's two separate, it can be bid.
Yes.
To install.
Yeah, like, like one company might get the lights, uh, or they could put it together and make it one bid, either one, you know, just so it comes out the same, you know?
Maybe it'll be sixteen days. Is that a now?
Should be, because we've got a list of lights. All they gotta do is pick them up. They don't have to go to each location, pick them up, or, or meet to look at them or anything. We got a list of all of it.
So I don't know what the law say, fourteen days or fifteen, sixteen?
We're gonna go about sixteen or seventeen days.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Got a motion about Councilman Freeman.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, put out for bid for the LED lighting for the city. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Now we did one, two.
I make that motion, too. And I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the labor for installing the LED lighting. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it. Okay. All right. Marshall, you done the two things you had, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Okay, I'm gonna start off with the library board. I'm gonna appoint one, two, three, four, five to the library board. Uh, Bill Ayers, his term's gonna be up, uh, October of two thousand eighteen.
Second.
I'll put that in motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for Bill Ayers, two thousand and eighteen on library board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next one is Teresa Hill, uh, same thing, is October eighteenth. I'll put that in motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Teresa Hill for October two thousand eighteen on library board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next is Paul Tomlin, October eighteenth. I'll put that in motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Paul Tomlin to be on library board, October of two thousand eighteen term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next two is gonna be October seventh in this year. Uh, first one is Ann Poe, B O E. I'll put that in motion.
Okay.
We have a motion for Ann Poe to be on, uh, her term on the library board to end October two, two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next is George Baker, October seventeen.
I second.
Who seconded that last one we did?
I did.
Okay, Ricky did. We'll do five.
Come on, Lakey.
Want some now?
No, we're good. Uh, who was the last name?
Uh, George Baker.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for George Baker, October two thousand seventeen on the library board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Roger Langiford, our mayor, is gonna be the liaison for library board.
Okay.
All right. The next I have is, let me back that up. Uh, I'm gonna put this motion for Pete Long to be on board adjustment. And his term's gonna be up October two thousand seventeen. I'll put that in motion.
Who made, who seconded it?
I'm running it.
Okay, you go back and you'll say. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to put Pete Long on the board of adjustments, uh, term, October first, two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I make a motion to put Ronald Ward in the planning commission. And his term's gonna be up October two thousand eighteen.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to put Ronald Ward, uh, his term will be, uh, October of two thousand eighteen on the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Who is on the planning commission board, liaison? Is it Andrew?
Can I ask a question about the board, these terms? So, were, has this been changed since y'all created these, this board?
Well, it was never, was organized, but who is who, what their term comes up and all that.
So they just go, they're rolling off that. It's not, because it was announced to ask about it like a couple months ago. It was, I, I was told that you had the, well, I believe the mayor told me that you had the, like, the person had to request to come on.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, there is, there ain't, is that what it is now? Like, it's probably been changed.
If that's up to cancel, who's served?
Well, we're just setting terms and, and, uh, and if they roll off, they, they're gonna have to roll off.
If anybody wants to come out, they're requesting on writing and we take them off.
But until they ask, they're on, is that what it's like?
They only, they only to the term comes up.
They only to the terms.
So there is terms now?
Yes.
Before it was not really, it was a term, but it was never enforced, the term. Now it's enforced. That clear?
Count.
Okay. The next thing I have is, we're gonna hire a new, uh, police officer as a, a patrolman, Mr. Stephen Malone. I'll put that on the motion to hire Mr. Stephen Malone for the police department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to hire police officer Stephen Malone. We have a motion and a second for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And also, I'd like to put this in motion tonight or not as far as the light.
I would wait till see how this other lights works out before we do.
Okay.
Because we're, we're gonna do that. We can get that, we probably work that into one.
That's all they did. Okay. All right, that's good.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm sure I got everything.
You've gotten the notes.
Yeah, I think I got everything. That's it.
And Byron?
Mayor, first thing I have, uh, the ordinance that Sam discussed with us, ordinance number zero three dash two oh, dash two seventeen, concerning our city streets, uh, I'd put that in the form of motion. This'll be upgrading our, changing our ordinances some to where they'll be a lot more standard. Because like, uh, we talked about, we're in the maintenance business, not to build a street business.
Mm-hmm.
We're just maintaining, so I'd like to put that in the form of motion if we adopt this ordinance for our streets.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I second.
Okay, just being in ordinance, we're gonna do a roll call vote. And so I'll start here with Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Bijon?
No, I'm gonna abstain on this because I have been involved and I'm involved with building the roads, uh, for the city subdivision, so I'm gonna abstain on this.
Okay. Good reason. Byron?
I'm for it. I made a motion for it.
Okay. Freeman?
I'm for it, too.
Okay. Terry?
I as well.
Get on with it. All right.
Mayor, there will be an exception, uh, to this new ordinance. Uh, streets has already, uh, been in grandfathered, it's already been constructed. They will be into that equation. Another thing I have, Mayor, is the, uh, Sam had recommended, uh, that we put a two-way stop sign up at, uh, on Church Street. I guess you could call it at the corner of Church and Carlisle Road. Uh, where both of them have to stop because, uh, it's very dangerous up, our eyes up there today, the house. Where both of them have to stop, because, uh, it's very dangerous up there. I was up there the other day, the house is right out into the road and you actually have to pull out into the road to see if there's anything coming down Church Street. Now, we got a mirror up there, but when you eyesight's like mine, it really don't do you a whole lot of good, so. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we put, uh, Sam and Ricky to put us a stop sign up there, that we're gonna make that lot safer for that area.
So, let's make it just a little bit.
With a two-way sign, like, your two-way stop sign there and a two-way BMW in Church.
Yeah, well, let's make sure we put all that in there. It's, this, that it needs to be two-way stops, you know, where, where everybody knows that. So, okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, install uh, stop signs, two-way stop signs at, um, Carlisle and Church Avenue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Good thing, Mayor, we've got to buy a, uh, laser transit, uh, it'll help us when we're putting in driveways and paths that we shoot the elevators on to make sure they'll enter properly. It'll also help us on the drainage issues to where we can make water go down the street there and be level.
Make sure we're not running.
We're not interrupting.
Well, we have to fix some covers and everything. We have one of the, we have foot covers.
We got so many driveways in the past that it has been put in the past fifty years that is not the really standard of engineering and water never had gone out, so we have to go down. So that's why we can invite a transit to shoot elevation, make sure it's proper elevation for the, for the town.
And that's a price of nine twenty-nine ninety-nine, Mayor.
Okay. Is that a motion?
In a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to buy transit for nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it.
Other thing, uh, Mayor, uh, I need to add Jamie Jones. We missed him. I don't know what the hell food crack what, we missed him, uh, on the Aggr Center Board, uh, add him to the two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add, uh, the term to Jamie's. Jamie Jones is, uh, to Aggr Center Board of October first, two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, Mr. Freeman?
All right, Mayor, after speaking with AMIC and our city attorney, I'm gonna make a formal motion that we do away with the biking trail for safety hazards.
Okay, we have a motion to do away with biking trail. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to do away with the biking trail at the sports complex and the Aggr Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it. Mr. Ross?
That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay. I, I just went over the next.
Yeah, I know.
So is that, is that, real quick, is that going to affect me lately? I may like to start tomorrow.
If, if we can, if the guys are not busy after that's passed at the shop tomorrow, they can pull the signs and start doing away with saying, do away with the jumps. Bridges and everything.
You might have to flag it out or pull a tape or something to make sure they're not going to go forward.
If the backup's available tomorrow, I'll take care of all of it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Sam. Mayor, uh, I'm gonna put, make a motion, uh, to accept the updated pay scale uh, that you made a committee on, uh, myself, Councilman, uh, Byram and, uh, Councilman Freeman. So I'm gonna put this in a motion that we accept the new updated pay scale.
Okay.
What is? I mean.
It's mostly changing some of the, uh, salary.
Oh, okay.
It's, uh,
Department heads.
Black owned.
Sanitation.
There's a few that, like, where they touch on more responsibility like J C S. Taking on some of that. There's a few that finds like that, but it's mostly, um, on the back there. And, and this right here, the, this, our chief of, to the, for you.
Honest asking, you know?
It's, it's just, it's mostly that kind of stuff.
I second the motion, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the pay scale as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it.
The changes I won't make on this, um, the final, is to take the captain out of here.
Right.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Is that in form of a motion, Bijon?
Yeah.
I second what you're having. We're doing away with the captain.
I hope you didn't have one that's gone.
Cause I told you, I told you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to remove the captain's spot on the, on the police department. All in favor, say aye.
All right, aye.
All opposed?
And let me give a reason why. For the record, the captain makes sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents and assistant chief makes sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Four cents difference. It doesn't make any sense for assistant chief make, uh, almost less or equal to the captain.
I agree. I'll look that in on that.
Right, so if you want, if you want to mark his assistant chief, that's fine. But right now, make a motion.
Got you.
Good, Bijon?
Okay.
He marked it out for you.
It's gone.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, next thing I have, we'll make a motion to buy two desktop computers for the fire department. Uh, for the amount of six sixty-seven.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to buy two computers for the fire department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
I second it.
On the computers, they was the second.
Byram?
Don't want to talk that down.
Sorry, they made a motion. So I second it.
Okay, so you got a motion and a second to pay the monthly bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion, we adjourn, Tammy.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Byram seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did you stay here all night?